Never thought it would happen. But I found myself in a secondhand guitar. So I've just got to know, I truly have to know. So you've got to let me know. It's your love. Making up for what's come. Baby, let me know. It's your love. Making up for past is done. Baby, let me know. Underground, underground. With the friends I've found, friends I've found. Ice cream. Ice cream. On Second Avenue. Ice cream on Second Avenue. It's your love. Making up for what's come. Baby, let me know. It's your love. Making up for past is done. Won't you let me know? It's your love. Making up for what's come. It's your love. Making up, making up. It's your love. Making up for what's come. Won't you let me know? It's your love. Making up for past is done. Baby, let me know. It's your love. Making up for what's come. It's your love.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Brown and I'm with the League of Women Voters. I will be a moderator for this virtual candidate forum. Thank you to the South and North Poway Vote Facebook group and the John Riley Project for hosting this forum. And thank you for the candidates who are running for Poway City Council Districts 2 and 4. So even though we miss seeing you in person, we are reaching more people via Zoom who can hear directly from the candidates to make this important decision on their ballot. And audience members don't even have to get dressed to comb their hair. So if you have any questions, please look in the chat box. You can put your questions in there to find out how to reach out. The League is proud to be a nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates nor political parties, but always working on vital issues that are important to members, our members, and to the public. We publish the Voter's Edge, which is a website where you can get your information online. If you go onto votersedge.org and type in your address, you will be able to see everything that's on your ballot, including some information on the candidates and also on the ballot issues. So I think that you will find it very useful. All candidates for local offices have been invited to put their information there. And I expect that all the candidates on tonight will take advantage of this free opportunity to reach out to your voters. The League moderates candidates forums using a format that is fair and informative. We have asked the candidates to keep to the issues of the location rather than personal attacks because our goal is for voters to be able to hear more about the candidates than what they would get from campaign ads and social media. So we are recording this forum and it will be available unedited from the beginning to the end to the public on our website, Any of these links that I talk about tonight, you will be able to see in the chat room. We have asked the attendees to submit questions online before the forum, but you can also submit questions again through the chat. Please remember to use civility and respect in your questions and word your questions in a general way so that they're applicable to all the candidates. We organize the questions to avoid duplication and make sure that we hit the topics of greatest interest. So assisting tonight are as question screeners. We have from the League, Beryl Flon, and from the host, Mary Shepherdson. Our timekeeper is Janelle Van Dusen. And we will adjourn by 8:30. With that said, I want to thank you all for joining in on this Zoom webinar to become a more informed voter. This forum is for the Office of Poway City Council, Districts 2 and District 4. There are two candidates for District 2 and three for District 4. For District 2, we have Barry Leonard and Phil Factor. For District 4, we have Chris Opes, Frank Fournier, and Kalen Frank. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening statement and two minutes for their closing statement and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. We will alternate the answers, who answers the questions first. And I will repeat the question for each candidate. Prior to the start of this event, the order of speaking was determined randomly. And so let's get started for our opening statements. And we will begin with Frank. And Frank, will you please start?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the organizers for putting on this forum and for all of you for joining us. We're here tonight to figure out what the candidates are about. We only have two minutes, so I think it makes most sense to ask two basic questions. Why do we want to do this and what makes us qualified? So let me answer those right off the bat. First, why do I want to run for city council? I've always had a special attachment to this community ever since my family settled here just in time to start sixth grade. Whether it's coaching Poway High School rugby or volunteering for the local Kiwanis Club, I've chosen to be an active member in my local community. I recently got engaged and as we began planning our family's future, it quickly became apparent how important our local community is to the development of that future. We decided that raising kids in the city we call home, the city and the country, needs to be preserved through our active involvement. Second, how am I qualified? I'm a Medical Research Alliance manager. Basically negotiating and coming up with solutions during conflicts is my day to day. My job is to maintain a healthy partnership between my company and another company as we achieve a specific goal. Stakeholders range from executives to researchers and to operation managers. All must be managed, organized, and kept aimed at completing the goal through active communication. This is analogous to the various moving parts and stakeholders within the city, working with the public, other council members, and relevant experts to oversee the city manager's office and city attorney to complete objectives that are best suited for our community. I believe these two qualities make me the ideal city council representative for Poway District 4, and I aim to be as transparent as possible. And I'm very excited to answer questions for everyone to get a better sense of who I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chris.
Good evening. My name is Chris Opes and I'm here today to hopefully answer questions and speak about why all of us essentially want to do this job, what we bring to the table, and the differences that set us apart. I grew up here in Poway. I've been here for over 30 years. My family has lived in Southern California now and the Poway area specifically for most of my life. But more than that, I've given back to the community. I've helped serve on Budget Review Committee. I've helped found robotics team for Garden Road Elementary School for the Junior Lego League. I have done a number of various volunteer activities throughout the city to not only support the city in the schooling and support the city through feedback to council, but also support the residents and the community at large. I believe that what makes our community great is how we provide and give back. And nobody comes better prepared to do that than Poway. When there's a crisis, when there's a problem, Poway really steps up. And in a lot of ways, that's what makes us a unique community. So being a part of that is just one of many things. Also, over the last few years, I've spoken at a number of council meetings. I've participated in workshops and I've also been an active member in trying to get public support or for or against various things going on in the city. And I think that that is really what drives things forward is getting the community involved and their voices to the table. You know, Big Stone Lodge was a big one that we had recently, but there are many others. And you know, it's what makes us unique when we have that history and we can move that forward to the next 20, 30, or 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kalen. Are you muted, Kalen?
Why haven't I figured this out yet? It's been how many months? Good evening. Thank you for having me. While I wish that we could be doing this in person, I'm grateful to everyone that made the effort to be here tonight. My name's Kalen Frank and I've been on the Poway City Council since 2018. I'm proud to represent the entire city, but I'm especially excited to be running for reelection in District 4. Born and raised in San Diego County and the daughter of two cops, I learned from a young age the importance of public service and giving back to your community. That upbringing greatly influenced my career path, which started in the U.S. House of Representatives, then later the County of San Diego, and finally here at the city of Poway, where I'm able to use my knowledge and experience to better serve my community. Over the last few years, we've accomplished some great things, such as approving the new community senior center, acquiring more open space, continuing to revitalize Poway Road, and building new affordable housing for seniors, senior veterans, and developmentally disabled adults. In addition, we've taken unprecedented steps to support our local businesses during this devastating pandemic, including the Small Business Loan Program, a free signage kit, picnic table loan program, and other steps that other cities have replicated. My husband and I are proud to be raising our family in South Poway. Our daughter just started preschool near Garden Road and my son, at almost six months, is about as old as the pandemic, but a lot cuter. As a council member, I'm grateful for my role in making their hometown a great place to grow up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Phil.
Good evening. I'm Phil Factor and I'm running for Poway City Council District 2. I want to ensure that the needs of the people are addressed. In 1976, I moved to Poway with my wife. We raised our two sons here and it was one of the greatest decisions we ever made. I am deeply rooted and devoted to the community. I have worked as a teacher in the Poway Unified School District for 38 years, as well as a counselor, a coach, and a community advocate. I have worked hard to address the needs of my students and their families. As your next city council member, I will advocate for a representative government, ensuring the concerns of the community are heard and addressed. Two, make sure that fiscal accountability with responsible spending occurs and that there is a reserve that will be able to be long-term security for our community. I also believe that transparency is important, especially in planning and development. I will make sure special interest groups, developers, financiers, will not decide our future in Poway. And number four, I will improve the quality of life that we have in Poway. I will support the Sheriff Department, the Fire Department, and I will safeguard the Poway Center for Performing Arts. I will safeguard the Big Stone Lodge and I will make sure that Poway is the city and the country, that our rural land is protected. As your next city council member, I, Phil Factor, will be a representative who listens to the people, cares about the people, and works hard to find the solutions with a collective focus. I will put the people first and you will hear that time after time from me that the people are the most important resource in Poway and I will support them. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Barry.
Thank you, Jean. Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters, South and North Poway Votes, the Facebook group, the John Riley Project, and John Riley. My name is Barry Leonard. I have been on the Poway City Council now for six years, serving the good people of Poway. And I'd like to say that Poway is a special place and I intend to keep it that way. My top priority is that I continue Poway's outstanding record of public safety, our conservative fiscal policies, our well-maintained infrastructure, and to enhance Poway's business community. As a current council member, I'm proud of being a voice for Poway residents. I'm known for being available, for demonstrating empathy, for bringing common sense to problem solving, and working hard to represent every Powe-geon in every neighborhood. I'm committed to improving the quality of life in Poway. Our community requires dedication and careful management in order to flourish for the future. During my council tenure, I voted to enhance the quality of life in Poway by funding the new community center, which will double as our senior center. We have also built affordable housing for special needs and for seniors. And we've transformed blight into functional beauty. All of these things have been done without raising taxes and without affecting our budgets. I'm a 17-year Poway resident. I've been married to my wife Debbie for over 36 years now. Our daughter has gone through the Poway School Districts, got a great education, and we love Poway. So please, I'd like you to join Mayor Voss, Councilmember Grushmalin, and Councilmember Frank and many other Poway community leaders in supporting me as I run for reelection and represent the people in Poway. I would greatly appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. Each candidate will have one minute for their response. And we, as I said, we're going to rotate these candidates. So Chris, you'll be starting first. And the first question is, on August 13th, Black Lives Matter supporters had a peaceful protest but marched down Poway Road and blocked the traffic. Do you think that the county sheriff department should have immediately cleared Poway Road when it was being blocked? Please explain.
So the Black Lives Matter movement in Poway has not communicated necessarily with the sheriff that I know of. And I know that the city is trying to work to ensure the safety of the residents. The concern is that there are issues on both sides. Some of the people feel that, you know, traffic should never be impeded and that there have been comments, whether that be online or what we've seen throughout the country where there's sort of a vigilante take on how to deal with protests and those kinds of things. So in the interest of safety, I think that protests should be concerned about that and should work with the sheriff to ensure that they aren't at risk. But as far as blocking the road, what I've seen has been use of crosswalks repeatedly, but nothing illegal about that. And so it comes down to issue of safety and keeping the community and residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kalen. And again, do you think the county sheriff department should have immediately cleared Poway Road when it was being blocked and explain?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say how proud I've been of our deputies in Poway and the protesters for working together in a peaceful manner. We've been very lucky in Poway to see peaceful protests that have been attended by, I think, up to over 100 people at a time. We had these instances of some protesters moving into the street. We also had another instance at a protest where deputies actually coordinated with the protesters to shut down an intersection for over eight minutes to represent the time that Mr. Floyd was under the law enforcement's knee. And I think that that was a great example of the coordination that can happen between law enforcement and our protesters. I draw the line at when people in their vehicles feel uncomfortable. I think that we have law enforcement there to ensure that both the protesters and the people in their vehicles are safe, and I think that we have accomplished that in Poway.
Thank you. And now Phil.
Yes. Number one, Black Lives Matter, it matters to me. And I want to thank that group for standing up for something that I really truly believe in. How they've been working their protests, I think, is another story. And I think that they themselves have learned how to do it the right way. Blocking the street was the wrong way. And our sheriff, the way they acted on it, I think they did a great job. We have a great sheriff department. I think that the protest is very important. To see the youth out there and stand up to really believe in something is extremely important. But our sheriff department has really been outstanding. They've handled it like professionals that we know they are. And I believe that the way it's going right now is the way America is all about with democracy and the right to protest. And I would like to commend both groups.
Thank you. Barry?
Thank you. People that have a right to protest, they have their amendments that they live under and our sheriff's department truly understands that. So does our city manager. When they work together, we can have peaceful protests. And that's what happened with the eight-minute Kalen was referring to. They had permission to do so. The police made sure that everybody was safe and they did it in the right way. One of the last ones, they had people out in the street and they were in traffic and they did some things they shouldn't have done. And that's where we draw the line. And our sheriff's department is very tolerant as long as people obey the rules and stay within the law. We have no problem with people protesting. They do it every weekend out on the sidewalks and everybody waves signs and they beep pawns and that's just fine. But nobody's allowed to come here and do property damage or endanger our citizens or cause problems for other people. They can get their message across in a much better way. Thank you.
I'm assuming I'm next, but Jean, you may be muted. It's always difficult going last, but I think I mimic everybody else that has spoken. Peaceful protest is part of being American, but as soon as you cross the line and you start making other citizens unsafe, that's when the sheriffs need to step in and create the safety once again. And I think the sheriff department did that quite well. Like Kalen Frank had mentioned, that they planned with organizers, with protest organizers for an eight-minute in conjunction with what happened to the late George Floyd. But I think what we saw more recently was quickly shut down by the sheriff's department and I think they did a good job. I don't know if they could have acted much quicker, but they kept the safety and that's what needs to happen. Peaceful protests go right ahead, but as soon as you cross the line and you start making everyone unsafe, including a protest, that's when the sheriffs need to step in and that's where I stand.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I muted myself because my dog was barking.
It's okay.
Well, all right, Kalen will start the second question. And should Poway have its own police department? Or should there be changes in the policing policy or the sheriff's policy? If not.
Thank you. That question is often brought up and I would challenge folks to look at the budgets of independent police forces. The contract that we have with the sheriff's department is an incredible deal for what we get. We not only get high-quality law enforcement, but we also have access to specialized units. We have access to law enforcement that has many more years of experience than you would get having your own department. We are actually a prime location for law enforcement. They love being in Poway. So we get a lot of really quality deputies. And we're protected from a lot of liability through the County of San Diego. So it really helps protect both the city's finances as well as our residents by having a contract with the sheriff's department. I think that our deputies do a fantastic job. I've met with Sheriff Gore to discuss what he's implementing in his department to ensure that our deputies on the street are unbiased in doing their job and representing people well. I feel very comfortable with the policies that he's implementing and think that we have a really great department here.
Thank you. And Phil?
Ditto, Caitlin. Our department is superior. Our city is known for having a great sheriff department protecting the people. We've had some of the lowest crime rate in the entire United States. We are known as one of the safest cities around. I myself, about a year ago, actually, no, it was January, I actually went on a sheriff ride-along and spent a whole day out there. And I was able to witness what it was like to be in that car with our sheriff. And I'll tell you what, I was so impressed with the professionalism and the mannerism and the way they do their job. I would like to see some changes though. I would love to see our law enforcement go back into our schools and win the trust of our teenagers. I would also like to see that our law enforcement walk the neighborhoods and get to know the people. I love our sheriff department and will support them 100%.
Thank you. All right, Barry. And again, should Poway have its own police department or should we change policing policies?
Is that for me?
Barry, yes.
I didn't hear you. I'll talk to you about financial value. The money that we spend on the sheriff is the majority of our budget. It's very expensive. They have an expensive contract, but the value we get from them, we couldn't afford to pay on our own. We couldn't afford to find, recruit, train, and retain really high-quality law enforcement personnel. The sheriff's department does a terrific job for us. As Phil mentioned, we are the safest city in the county. We have been year after year. And the reason for that is the relationship we have with the sheriff's captain. He's our supervisor and he works under our city manager. So we give direction to our city manager. He gives direction to the sheriff's captain. And that's how law is enforced within the boundaries of Poway. And for the amount of money we spend on that, which is very considerable, you can't beat it. The other thing is that these police are now having to do mental illness training. And we have a PERT team, which is unusual, but they help with mental illness problems and a majority of the calls go that way. So there's other issues as well, but we get a good value.
Okay, thank you. And Frank?
I am very thankful that we have the sheriff department within Poway. However, I would like to see how we move towards a police department that was run by Poway locals. That's something that I've always had, I guess, an affinity to. But then again, I think the real purpose of being a council member is going out there and getting public opinion and seeing what the people want. And so even though it may be opposite of what I want, I think the city needs to do more canvassing of residents and figure out what the residents want. From my time walking around South Poway, I've come into contact with a lot of residents that would like to see a local PD within Poway since for such a small city. But there's also that caveat of it being very expensive. So I think we need to be more transparent and weighing the cost benefit to a local PD and a sheriff's department. But altogether, our sheriff's department does a great job. And so even if we don't change it, I think that would be just fine as well.
All right, and Chris?
Yeah. So with regard to the police department and sheriff's department rather in Poway, they do do a fantastic job. There's no question that the dollar amount that is spent is well-spent, but there are issues and some of those issues come down to communication. A good example of that goes back to the last question with the protests. Recently in Poway, back in June, we had curpuse enacted. And as part of that, I know several people that were out there, business owners, residents, and protesters alike. Nobody had any idea what was going on. They had no idea when it was going to affect. They had no idea what it would impact. And really that communication from the ground level, the police that were out there ensuring that the protest stayed peaceful, which they did, it wasn't there. And so I think that there's a lacking communication in ways that that can be addressed. But as far as having our own, I don't know that that's the right answer. But there are problems and we do need solutions.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on our third question and Phil will be starting this one. The state requires that Poway build more low-cost and affordable housing. How and where should it be built?
You know, we talked about that this past week in our city council meeting and there were what they called three lots. First of all, I consider that we only had two places because the Big Stone Lodge is a historical monument. And that leaves the property that is off of Twin Peaks and Espola and also the Montevista. I think both would be great for affordable living. I definitely think that the first time this city council passed up the housing for veterans was a big mistake. I would like to see veterans be welcomed in Poway. I would like the red carpet thrown out and I'd like to see units built for veterans first. Secondly, affordable living, I also believe that it shouldn't just go to seniors. It shouldn't just go to people with disabilities. I think it also should go to people with low income and that means minimum wages. So I am for affordable living in Poway, but I also want to let you know that I am... Whoops, stop.
You can finish your sentence.
Okay. I am against mass development like other communities have. So let's just try to keep it small and make it work.
Okay, long sentence. All right, Barry. And where and how should the affordable and low-cost housing be built?
Thank you, Jean. We currently have hundreds of units of affordable housing. We're proud of the affordable housing we have. Most people wouldn't even recognize it because they look for something that they don't see. They see beautiful buildings. We have a requirement by the state. It's called RENA. And our requirement is 1,319 units to be built over the next 10 years. We really don't have the ability to build something like that. We don't have the financing in place. We have certain parcels of land, but we can't build anything without money. So I would like to remind Mr. Factor that he probably should go back and review the veterans' housing decision that was made by the city council because the city council didn't pass on the veterans. The veterans left town with their money. That's the bottom line. And we... And we do our best to build what we can with what we have. We have currently an idea about trying to attract money and to build property on Montevista Road by the hospital. We're hoping that will work out well for seniors and special needs folks because that's where we have the most demand.
Okay, and thank you. Frank? Did I repeat the question? How and where should affordable, low cost housing be built?
I agree with Mr. Leonard. I think it should be down at Montevista. I like how the, and I think Kalen Frank mentioned this in the meeting, but I like having the veterans and other people of the sort be near a hospital and public transportation. I think that's a great idea. When it comes to affordable housing in general in Poway, I understand that we have to meet state requirements, but I do want to remind everybody on the council that we have a motto, which is the city in the country, and I'd like to keep it that way. So as much as we can, we have to keep that in mind as we're developing all of these affordable housing units. And I'd like to see these things be done in other districts outside of District Four. I believe as a southern Poway resident that I feel like Poway Road has become overly populated with traffic and I'd like to see it change and be more widespread so that we can all evenly take on this challenge.
Thank you. And Chris? Where and how should they get in affordable housing?
So this really comes down to one thing, in Lufy's. We right now have the lowest in Lufy's anywhere in the county, $500 to get out of affordable housing. We either need to raise that significantly right now or demand the developers deal with the affordable housing requirement. That's the bottom line. We don't need to find affordable housing. That's the developers' deal. They have to, by state mandate, find affordable housing on their lot or pay for it somewhere else. And we really are just giving them bailouts with this $500 in Lufy. So when it comes down to it, the where is some of a concern. But the biggest problem is we have no money because we've defunded ourselves. And we really need to fix that before we can even begin to discuss where the city can build anything because we don't have the money for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Caitlin?
Thank you. Yes, this was a topic recently at the city council meeting and I was proud to eliminate Big Stone Lodge from consideration. I don't believe that it's appropriate for affordable housing. And I think that there are greater things that we can do with that property that would serve the community and represent the heritage of that site. And I was proud to suggest Montevista as a site because of its proximity to the hospital and public transportation, two key things. I think there are really innovative things happening with affordable housing. They aren't just high density, high rise units. There's bungalow style cottage style village. So my hope is that once we see what comes back from the affordable housing developers, we'll really see what our options are. And I think that we'll have a great option, hopefully that will serve veterans or adults with developmental disabilities as well as low income workers. It's important to note that veterans only have a preference. It can't be required for veterans. And Montevista is not in District Four. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we're going to go to the fourth question and we will start with Barry. How, what can Poway do to slow down climate change?
Oh boy. Not a whole lot, to tell you the truth. Climate change, to me, in my opinion, climate change is global. And at a very local micro level, it's very difficult to do anything with that. We have, we have made some efforts toward that. We've, you know, we're careful about our recycling. We offer a hazardous waste recycling on Saturdays for residents to do for free. We built solar. We built a solar field behind the Performing Arts Center. We had another proposal to install a much larger solar field, but the numbers just didn't pencil out. Trying to be a part of climate change is not easy and it's not cheap. And so currently, right now, in the budget situation we're in, we're always open to ideas and new thoughts, but as far as allocating large scale money with no return on that, it just doesn't pencil out for us. So, you know, we encourage people to do their best they can with what they have, but we don't enforce other people's rules on them.
All right, thank you. And Frank, what can you do, what can Poway do to slow down climate change?
I think like what Barry said, it's pretty hard as a council member to enact all of these changes, especially when you're essentially oversight on the city manager and the city attorney. However, I would like to see a sort of locally organized group within Poway, maybe even subsidized by the city of Poway that suggests how we can do more for the environment. Have members within the community and they can volunteer for this. That would be amazing. I do think that it is overall hard. It's financially expensive. However, I think that in order to be good stewards of the earth and future generations, we should look into it. And having a committee that offers up suggestions in order to do that would be, would be great to see.
Okay, Chris?
So as has been mentioned, a global issue in Little Poway. Biggest thing we can do realistically is not be the one holder out on a climate action plan. Realistically, we need to start there, you know, baby steps. We've already got great progress. LED lights, solar panels, things that have been discussed. You know, we're making those steps, but without a plan, just like our general plan, just like many of the other plan documents and guidelines for our way forward and future of Poway. We need to start there for climate as well. And it doesn't have to be some overarching, burdensome document that says, you know, you can't go and water your lawn, although drought might prevent that anyway. It just needs to have common sense approaches where we start, you know, just we would give preference to Poway businesses. We give preference to those that protect the environment or do good for the environment and give a return. Little steps is how we get there and it starts with a climate action plan.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Thank you. I think the biggest thing we can do is follow state mandates. The state has essentially determined its own climate action plan that is mandated by all cities. And as long as we continue to follow that, we are meeting those guidelines. And essentially we have our own climate action plan without exposing the city to the extreme financial liability that having its own independent climate action plan would do. So I think that that's a huge thing that we've done. We've also got our green waste program coming that's going to be rolled out at the end of the year. That's one way that we are complying with a climate related state mandate. So folks will be getting a new green trash can to add to their curb. So I think the biggest thing is, you know, like has been said, we are a small city. Let's not add to the problem. Let's make sure that we're following all of the legislation that's coming down and being on top of that. And essentially that's what operates as our climate action plan and I feel really good about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Phil?
This is a very important topic, not only for Poway, but our nation and the world. The first thing I would do is join the other cities in San Diego and learn from them. We right now are the holdout when it comes to the action plan. And I would make sure that we are joining in and getting their recommendations and their support and their knowledge on what they're doing. Secondly, as an educator, I also think that we can go to the Poway Unified School District and join hands with the Poway Unified and try to motivate the students and the families to go green and support it as a city of Poway. And then the third thing is there definitely are answers from planting trees, promoting Arbor Day. We have a landfill up Poway Road. Why not turn that also into a solar field? Why not put a couple of windmills in Poway? I know they don't look good, but guess what? Let's go green and I think we need to invest the money.
Thank you. All right, we are on to the fifth question and we will start with Frank. So how do you think Poway can adjust city finances as a result of COVID-19? And Frank, you're starting. Are you on?
Yes, sorry, it took me a second to get to the unmute button. I think that the city council and the mayor have done a good job in helping out our businesses during COVID. But there is something to be said where we're going to be post-COVID. And I think there's a lot of cities out there like within Alabama, Birmingham did a great thing. They worked with corporate partners and they spearheaded this creation of a fund to support small businesses through low interest loans. And there's other ideas too, you know, to help out maybe less tech savvy restaurants connect with Uber Eats and DoorDash and having an opportunity within the city to help them with that. There's some small business stabilization funds that we could offer. But I think it's always great to have savings for that rainy day or that future pandemic. Us in the science community, we realize that there isn't a bigger pandemic coming and we should be better prepared. And having money for that is always a positive.
Thank you. Chris?
So with regard to the budget and COVID-19, it's going to be a bit tricky down the road. A lot of things have been pushed back and delayed. And that's helped us essentially mitigate the worst of the impacts. But last I saw, we were, I believe, over five million. I'd have to double check again in funding or in spending just regards to COVID-19 as far as the impact on our budget. The impact at the end of the day isn't until COVID's over and, you know, businesses are back. So, you know, the 2008 financial crisis lasted years. This even lasting a full year still gives us another few months of dealing with the cost. And so we really won't know the final bill until that point. And so it's good that we have reserves. I was part of the budget review that suggested making sure that those reserves would be available for things like this.
Thank you. And Caitlin?
Thank you. Firstly, we have an incredible finance director who brought us a balanced budget this year amid the already ongoing recession. He operated a process called entrenchment and found over $2 million of savings in our budget to ensure that we had a balanced budget without layoffs, without furloughs and without reducing services to residents. I think that our history of fiscal responsibility combined with our healthy reserves that have been managed responsibly will get us through this. We've also been able to implement the small business loan program through our reserves to help our small businesses in Poway get back on their feet. And I think that's been an incredible thing that not every city has been able to do because they simply don't have that money. So to see our city using it wisely at the time that it's needed, I think is a great thing. And we also received money from the county to help mitigate some of those expenses that we spent on COVID. I think it's important to remember that we're not alone in this and there are resources and our city manager is fantastic at getting those funding, that funding and ensuring that we're getting our fair share.
Thank you. And now Phil?
First of all, I believe our city has done a tremendous job of supporting businesses. I know that our mayor has really done just a fantastic job reaching out with tables, with loans, with a true concern to the business population. I think this is really tough times and we really don't know. I asked for a report on how this affected the city and it's still kind of up in the arms, you know. We don't really know how it really did affect our city in terms of revenue, but we all have to face the fact that we don't have the money coming into our city and we're going to have to tighten budget. So the thing is, right now, we're all struggling. And my concern is for the families as well, not just the businesses. How are we going to help families that are going to be evicted? How are we going to help the families that don't have food for their kids? So it's going to take a lot of leadership. It's going to take a city that cares about everybody.
Thank you. And Barry?
Well, it's tough to go after Caitlin because she stole all my lines. She really gets the stuff. We're not afraid of bad times. We've been through bad times in the past. We're also very careful about how we save money and what we use that money for. And some folks think because they've got checks left in their checkbook that they got plenty of money. But we know that it takes real capital to make a difference. And some years ago, we got together and we we looked at the available cash we had, the leftover funds from redevelopment. We put aside a big chunk of change and we said, we need to have money for emergencies. We have that money right now. As Caitlin said, we're getting money from other sources. We've got a terrific financial director and we've got a fabulous city manager. They have managed this city through this crisis so far anyway, in a remarkable fashion. We just don't know what the rest of this is going to look like. So fortunately, we have the finances. We have the smart people in place and we have the city council that really understands how to manage these things. So we're in pretty good shape.
Very good. All right, we are on to the sixth question and we will start with Chris. The city council approved the Poway Road specific plan in 2017. If the vote for this were held today, is there anything that you'd like to change or add to the plan?
Certainly. With regard to the power and specific plan, there are a number of issues that have been brought up throughout development approvals in the last few years, ever since it was approved, basically. Until a plan is approved, it's hard to see where its flaws would be. So knowing then what we know now, it's that hindsight is 2020, so it's easy to criticize. But knowing that, I can easily point out some things, you know, that in the plan, it says 45 feet for height restrictions. And yet we've already approved over that. It says that we should not have setbacks. Well, without setbacks, how are you going to have a walkable community that can be safe without people possibly having to dodge a sign that says, hey, there's donuts here? You look at what the impacts are and you've got to start asking questions on whether or not it's a community benefit or useful to have no setbacks, higher buildings and more density as the plan kind of outlined. So I think those would be good changes.
Thank you. And Caitlin? Anything you'd like to change or add?
Thank you. I do think that it's been, it was a very well thought out and long process with a lot of community input. But there are a few things that I think could be addressed. I would eliminate the possibility of four story buildings altogether. I think that that's inappropriate for our corridor. I think that even three stories is pushing it. So I'd like, I'd like to see three stories further back. It doesn't fit the community character of our of our city and what our aim is for that. I'd like to see requirements on the proportion of commercial versus housing. I think that the point of the specific plan was to revitalize our commercial district, not to bring in more housing. So I'd like to see that balance more codified. And I would have liked to see affordable housing addressed directly in the specific plan. We've talked about in Lufy's and where to put these affordable housing. I think that having a section specifically in the specific plan to address that would have been a smart thing to do with all the state mandates coming down.
Thank you. Phil?
Great question. Big concern of Phil Factor and all the people that I've spoken to as I go door knocking in District Two. I believe that the city development on Poway Road is a big, big mistake. And I'm going to tell you why, because it's lacking transparency, it's lacking the people review. If I am elected, I will put a oversight group to overlook the development of Poway Road. You know, we're putting a lot of effort into overviewing the Proposition P and the decision on the farm, but we're not doing that on Poway Road. I believe in transparency. I believe in a committee to be the oversight all the way through Poway Road, and I believe that has not happened. I believe that it's being ramrodded through the city of Poway. In fact, I'm concerned that this current city council is going to make decisions that is going to affect us for the rest of the, rest of the time. And I'd like to put a hold on that.
Okay, thank you. Barry?
I think there's a misconception about what the Poway Road specific plan is. It's actually a framework that was created for development of mostly blighted and abandoned properties on Poway Road. And also private properties that folks just wanted to sell and move on in their lives. The specific plan was based on factors that we got from the state. And also there was a group of citizens, there was 10 or 12 people that met on a regular basis from all different walks of life in Poway. They came up with the idea for this framework in conjunction with, with Poway development professionals and outside engineering professionals as well. The bottom line is that if a property is proposed to be built there, it still has to get approved through the Poway City Council. So we have the ultimate say on this thing. The two things that we've done, the first one was the outpost. It's mixed residential, it's 53 units. It has two levels of underground parking. There'll be a gym, there'll be a restaurant, there'll be a gathering place. It's very open to the public and it has direct access to community park out the back. The second one is the Carmen's. It's 97 condominiums and there's 44 units of affordable housing as part of that. And the city approved those based on those merits.
Thank you. All right, and Frank, anything you'd like to change or add to it?
Yes, what Mr. Leonard had said is important, but I think that the real important thing is whatever infrastructure supports families is the way to go. And our city, again, the motto is the city in the country. And so to mimic what others have said, two stories and below, less traffic within the main part of Poway, right on that, on that intersection is better. I would have liked to see more mom and pop stores be promoted in that area. Less big building apartment complexes and more of those businesses up in the business park. That's why I thought we had that. And on Poway Road, I'd love to see more mom and pops shops, like I said, parks, other sort of amenities. And that's what I, that's what And that's what I that's what I would have changed within the specific plan would have been changing the ratio of housing to amenities and increasing the amenities. Old Poway Park is a good example. I might even go to the Hop Shop tonight, but it's nice walking around there and that's how Poway Road should be.
You're on mute.
You're muted, Gene.
Sorry, my dog keeps barking. So Kalen, do you support the farm in Poway ballot measure and why?
I do. I voted on it. I do support it. I think that it's really setting a standard for what this type of development in Poway can look like. It has a great balance of community benefits in addition to housing that is much needed. I think it's went through, we know the developer has gone through an extensive public input process. And ultimately, I think that it we should be in charge of our own destiny. I don't think that the state will look at that size acreage in already disturbed land and think that we can simply ignore it. So the alternative may be a lot worse than 160 homes and 70% open space. And so I think that it's a fantastic development and I hope the voters of Poway support it.
All right, and then Phil?
Yes, I'm the only candidate that is holding back and I'm going to tell you why. First of all, it's a prop that's going in front of the people because it's a rezoning prop. If the people vote yes on Prop P, then Kevin McNamara will have the opportunity to build the farm. I did not want to skew the vote. I wanted to hold back and say, let the people decide. If it's true democracy, I think it's important that the people vote and the people make the decision, especially impacted by the farm that live in that neighborhood. I live up on Iron Mountains, totally opposite direction. So I think that I need to hear from the people. And as you know, that Phil Factor does stand for people first. And I think that community should voice their opinion by voting on November 3rd, yes or no. Not for Phil Factor to tell you how to vote or what I should endorse. I think it was wrong in part of the city to endorse it.
Okay, thank you. Barry?
Yes, thank you. The people are going to vote on this. It it has a proposition. So it's our job to inform the public, to educate them, to explain to them the nuances of development. Kevin McNamara understands all this. He has gone to extensive lengths to do a fantastic plan for this blighted property. We're going to replace the weeds and the and the fallen trees and the dilapidated clubhouse and the old chain link fence with something that's really aesthetically beautiful. Everybody who drives by on Escola Road will be able to take advantage of the new views. But you can also stop in. There'll be a gym, there'll be a pool, there'll be tennis and and pickleball available to the general public. The it will come at a fee, obviously, but they'll take down the chain link fence that surrounds the place. They'll allow the public access to three and a half miles of trails. It's going to be absolutely beautiful. Flower fields and 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 160 homes and 117 acres is not a tight squeeze. It's a very appropriate project and and the city council is 100% behind it because what you see is exactly what you're going to vote on.
All right, and Frank?
I agree with Mr. Factor that it's up to the people to decide. But for my my own opinions, I remember when I used to jump the fence and go in the jacuzzi down over there in Stone Ridge, sorry. And I would have maybe liked to see the city invest more in maybe reclaimed water or some sort of thing to keep that that golf course alive, since I like golf. But it didn't happen and and it went under for one reason or another. And I all I have to say is that, you know, there's some pros and there's cons and the people have to decide on that. The pros are that the people that are developing that area are the same people that did Old Poway Park and it's really nice over there. Everyone hasn't checked out Smoking Jay's Barbecue, go check it out. And the farm, it may be similar. And so it's nice to see something being developed on that side of of the city. And I hope one day my kids will be jumping the fence into the farm.
All right, and Chris?
So with regard to the farm, there are a number of issues and I've talked to Kevin numerous occasions, actually. Most recently, he actually got back to me with some of the issues I had brought up and said that, you know, those are some changes that maybe he could work into the final draft. I haven't seen the final draft, but I keep getting more questions and keep directing them his way. Lately, one of the biggest ones that is really kind of bugging me, I guess you could say, is that the EIR points out that there were multiple choices for how that development could go. We have what we get today or what the council voted on. We have what I'll call density minus from one step down. We have lower density, which is even one step below that. And then we have a no change option in that EIR. So my question is, why aren't we getting a vote on those options? Because when it really comes down to it, we should have more options rather than just what the council chose and that's your only choice come November 3rd. So that's my issue right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I think we're ready for question eight. And we will start with Phil. And has or will your campaign accept donations from developers?
Absolutely not. No chance. Nada. No way. And I'm going to tell you right now, I think it's been a mistake in the past. And I think that when you are a city councilman or the mayor and you're taking money from developers, developers or financiers, people that are looking for special permission to build in Poway, wrong. And as you know, I am against development and I would absolutely be against taking one dime from anybody that thinks that they could persuade Phil Factor, okay, to build in Poway. Poway is city in the country and we need to keep it rural. Don't buy it. Don't buy it. Don't even try. Nada.
Okay, thank you. All right, Barry? Will your campaign accept donations?
I have never been offered money by a developer. I've never taken money by a developer. I have my own money. I'm fine. You can't buy me. Thank you.
All right, Frank?
I don't know what everyone's talking about. I'd take the money. No, I'm just kidding. No, I'm grassroots all the way. I'm walking door to door and I'm getting my friends and my family to support my campaign and that's all I need. I mean, we're a local town. We're still small and we're the city in the country and I like that way.
All right, and Chris?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty easy answer unless somebody in my donations has suddenly popped up as a developer that I don't know about. I haven't accepted any money from developers. I'm not looking to accept money from developers and I take it one step further. You know, the city has contracts with many organizations and I really don't accept money from multiple organizations or heads of those organizations because realistically, we are a small city, don't need it, don't want it. And I think that, you know, there's conflicts of interest there and realistically, we should keep it small town and keep it local.
All right, thank you. And Kalen?
Thank you. We've kept our donation limit low. We can't accept donations from PACs or businesses, which I think the point is to ensure that developers or other businesses don't have undue influence. I think it's insulting to think that anyone's vote could be bought for $250. I my vote can't be bought, period. And I'm certainly, I don't feel indebted to anyone that has donated to me. I they know where I stand and I'm not aware of accepting any developer money. And I'm proud of the fundraising that I'm doing.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we went to now the next question's a little more in depth. And we'll start with Barry. What do you think is the biggest problem for the city of Poway and how would you address it in the coming years?
Oh, the biggest problem we have is very obvious. It's our budget. In the past, we always had plenty of money in the bank. We had money from the redevelopment authority and 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 we were able to afford a lot of luxuries. Those days are over. Our our revenues have not kept pace with our expenses. And right now, we're under the gun. We have large increases in our public safety and our insurance and and our pensions. And these are things we can't control. 80% of these these additional charges are uncontrollable because they're contracts. We don't have a choice there. So what we have to do is be creative. We have to find ways to cut expenses. We've done that. We've not hired certain people for certain roles. We've left jobs open. We've asked people to do more with less. And we've also been able to defer a lot of our capital projects based upon the need to finance them. It's it's a matter of need to have versus want to have. And so to me, the budget is our most important challenge we face.
Okay, thank you. And Frank?
Me, it's the development we're seeing within Poway. I'd like to see a change in the ratios to amenities and I think that may help in regards to the budget. I mean, if you're having an influx of people outside of Poway coming into Poway, spending within the city, it may help. But for me, the the biggest concern is is Poway Road and South and figuring out a way where we can develop it in a different way, where we maximize amenities to turn our city, to keep our city, the city in the country, like I've mentioned before, and not regulate that that term, that motto to history and be the city in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
So it's actually very interesting. I agree with Mr. Leonard when he says the budget. But the budget touches many things. When you look at it, you know, Los Penicios Laguna is on the horizon with the budget. Development is the reason that the budget is hopefully going to be solved in the future. You know, we're using development as a solution to the budget problems. So when it comes down to the root problem, it is the budget. I don't agree with the solutions currently in place or in underway. And I'd like to see other options explored. I think that we have many other options that we can explore. And, you know, if we had a real big concern with our budget, we wouldn't have looked to putting $9 million into a community center that was still standing and could have been renovated. We probably would have looked at, you know, putting those costs aside and saying, you know, maybe we need to save this money or use this money for the development that allows us to have a budget where we can have the things that we want, which would be a community center. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Kalen?
Thank you. I'm going to have to agree that it's absolutely our stagnant revenues versus our growing costs. One of the key things is that as a city, we've made it a policy not to use one-time funds on ongoing expenses. Our ongoing revenue is the issue, not the revenue that we've had set aside for capital projects. I think that Mr. Leonard did a good job of kind of explaining what's within our control and what we've been trying to do at the city to mitigate some of those impacts. But there's also things that we can do outside of the outside of our role at the city. And those are things like encouraging folks to shop where they live. One of the big issues that we face in Poway is people tend to leave to spend their money. And sales tax revenue is a big portion of our our budget. So I was proud last year to establish our shop, our first shop local month and revitalize our shop local program, working with the chamber to encourage residents and realize that every dollar that they spend in Poway goes back into their quality of life versus going out to Scripps Ranch, Carmel Mountain, Ranch Bernardo to spend it where it it isn't go back into their lives.
Okay, thank you. And Phil?
Wow, here I go. I believe that our city council lacks transparency, trust, and democracy in a representative government. Some of the council members have been selected in, they weren't voted in. Secondly, when they're in there, they're not listening to the people. When you have a petition of 1,000 people and you hand it and you say, this PCPA is supported by 1,000 people, we want to keep it for the city of Poway, that's a document that is by the people, for the people. So I believe people first and I believe that our city needs to listen to the people. When they come into the chamber, they need to be respected, they need to be listened to, they need to be heard and they need to be counted upon and responded back upon. And I find that this city council has not responded to the people. They need trust and I want this government in Poway to be loved and cared about. I don't think it is.
Thank you. All right, we're up to the 10th question. And we will start with Frank. Poway has not dedicated any new park space since 2004. Do you think Poway has a sufficient amount of park space in the densest parts of town?
No, I'd like to see more. We used to pride ourselves in Poway for the most not a dedicated space. And I find that that is is quickly changing and I'd like to see that that be retained. Having more dedicated space, more parks, more amenities. And that's one of the things that I agree with Kalen Frank. People are shopping outside of Poway, but you can bring them back in with having the right amount of amenities within Poway versus having these giant apartment complexes. You could have things that bring people into the city to want to shop, go to museums, go to parks, maybe even have more and more parks and softball or baseball areas where people are renting that space in order to play their games and that will bring revenue into the city. But I think that the ratio of amenities needs to change and that could even help with the budget. Thanks.
Thank you. And Chris?
So the short answer is no. The really slightly longer answer, because you only have a minute, is that, you know, Poway had a unique opportunity. We owned some land right next to a community park and we've sold it. It's now going to be the Poway Commons. We have in our general plan guidelines that say X amount of park, and that is active park, not passive park or open space rural land, open or active parks that needs to be dedicated for every X amount of people. We're bringing more people in. We need to add more park space. It's a simple math. And so, you know, when we look at that, how we had land, having a budget to do what we want with that land and having the money to do what we want with that land was the missed opportunity. You know, we could have done something great with that. We could have developed it into something on our own and it could have been a power project controlled by Poway with Poway amenities and it wasn't. So, you know, at the end of the day, we need more parks.
Okay, thank you. Kalen?
Thank you. The issue is not, do we have enough park space? The issue is that our parks aren't utilized to reflect the usage that our residents want. I have a two and a half year old daughter. I go to our parks a lot on weekends and weekdays and I've never felt that the parks are overcrowded. The issue is that we've dedicated park space to things that aren't being used. And so that goes as negative or empty park space and it isn't really bringing value to our residents. I was proud to support a assessment of community park that our staff is working on to really look at how are folks using community park? That should be the gem of our park system. It's in the heart of our city. And so I think that we have some work to do to better utilize the space that we have and make it more effective for our residents. The issue is not a lack of space, it's a lack of utilized space. So that would be my my goal in the next year is to see that assessment come to fruition and start making those improvements to really serve our residents and make a community park what it could be.
Thank you. And Phil?
Never enough parks. Parks are a big part of Poway. Families, to see families in our parks, to see holiday in the park, to see Poway Lake, awesome. I would like to see more and I would like to propose, and this is way out there and I I know it's 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 a dream. I'd like to see us add another reservoir. I'd like to see it be one of the greatest fishing grounds for all of Poway and bring fishermen in from all over and have fishing derbies and with that, picnics and concerts. And at the same time, that reservoir can generate power. If we ship water up to Ramona and ship it on back down, we could turn some turbines and it could pay for those parks. So I'm all for it. I would like to see us move forward and 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 do do more for the parks. One other thing, if you have a park, you got to maintain it and we're not doing that. We're falling apart and we're not supporting the parks the way they're needed. Let's put more money into it.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to try to squeeze in one more question. I'm afraid this will probably be our last question.
I didn't get to answer that one, Gene.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Call me on it.
Thank you. You know, everything comes at a cost. And it's it's naive to think that we can have everything we want because we just can't afford to have everything we want. The scenario that Mr. Factor just described sounds an awful lot like Lake Poway to me. They just finished the fishing derby for night fishing and people had a great time up there. Unfortunately, they had to cancel the concerts this summer because of COVID. But Kalen's right. I mean, we're we're building a brand new community center and $20 million facility that'll hold the senior center as well. We've got a brand new community pool that just got remodeled over there right next to the biggest park that we have with all the different sports amenities. But Dave Grush and I went over there and said they're not using what they should use for what people want. Are tennis courts still necessary when people like pickleball? So we've we've got the community services people doing an evaluation of that. And we're trying to find a cost-effective way to remodel our parks so that we can be more to other people. But we're not going to buy new land just to turn into parks. We can't afford it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Barry, for catching me on that.
Watching you, Gene.
All right, so our last and 11th question is, and we will start with, what did I say, Chris? Over the last 30 years, the council authorized borrowing over $8 million plus interest from the Water and Sewer Funds. And when redevelopment was shut down, the council voted to not pay back the millions owed to the Water and Sewer Funds. the millions owed to the water and sewer funds. Do you support that decision and why? And again, we're starting with Chris.
Oh, it's actually a very interesting question. I don't support the decision. But what it really comes down to is when you hear things like, we didn't raise taxes, water rates by all ratepayers are a tax. We paid for that money. So that money that was loaned to the city from the residents is a tax. We were taxed, it was paid, we were never paid back. So until that's done, we paid a tax. And, you know, as far as I can tell, there's no interest in paying it back from the current council. And I think that's a shame, you know? I think we really need to look at why that was the way it is and how we can make good on those debts, you know? We're a unique city and we have a unique obligation for our residents. I don't care if it's 10 years from now, I don't care if it's 50 years from now. Making good on your debts is something that I was taught as a kid and we should be doing it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Caitlin?
Thank you. Um, it's not quite as simple as it sounds. My understanding is those loans were a very complicated system that included redevelopment. And according to the state, there is not a way to repay those loans. They've been cleared and marked by the state. And it actually is not something that the city is able to do because they were not loans directly to the city. It's my understanding, this is also a very, the, the record keeping and all of that is not what it is today. And to determine actually the value of those loans and how to repay them is something that our, the state and the city have said is not something that we can do. So I consider the matter closed.
All right, Phil?
Well, first of all, I believe that we need to pay our debts. This city used to be in the black. In fact, two years ago, we were talking about being one of the few cities that was having no financial problem. We had a reserve. We also have one of the largest industrial parks. We have 19,000 people working up there with all the industry. And I'm not sure on what they're bringing in. But I know there's money that is coming from the industrial center. How to pay these debts, I think, is very, very, very important. I do believe that we should have that budget committee take further look at it. And I do believe that the answer is in the hands of the city council to resolve it. I believe that we should never, ever have a deficit or be able to spend, be spending money that we, we definitely are still owing out.
Okay, thank you. Barry?
Yeah, this is something that happened years ago with the redevelopment authority, which has been defunded. Jerry Brown came and cleaned out the piggy bank and took the money. And we were, we were given a small remuneration for our trouble. There, there were deals that were made between the, Poway was known as a water authority, but they, they evidently had some type of, of cross deal with redevelopment that involved other facilities being built as well with that money. And it wasn't a city of Poway, city council thing to deal with. As Caitlin said, the, the state overruled things. They, they sorted through the mess when they got ahold of it and they made decisions. So I'm with Caitlin. It's, it's history and I don't think we're responsible for it.
All right, thank you. And Frank?
I, I believe we, we should fight on behalf of our constituents. So if, if the Poway residents are owed money, then I think it behooves the council to go forth and talk to the state and do what they can. If nothing can be done, nothing can be done. But I think this goes to a saying that my father, my retired marine father used to say, his poor, prior planning prevents piss poor performance. And I think if we invest in our infrastructure, if we are aware of what's happening around Poway and we do very novel and, and efficient methods of maybe reclaim water is another idea. I, I mentioned before, but if we invest in our infrastructure, then we may, you know, it may pay dividends in the future. You know, we all know this in business. If you invest in R and D, it always pays dividends in the future and allows you to save more on, on the tail end. But I think if, if we are city council members, we should fight on behalf of our residents, whether or not we agree or not. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, before our candidates give our, their closing remarks, I wanted to thank the audience for attending and asking such great questions. I hope you all registered to vote. And you can check that at sdvote.com. And be sure to fill out your census if you haven't filled that out. You can do that at my2020census.gov. Those links are in the chat room if you haven't already done that census. Also, I'd love for audiences to, men and women, to attend more league events. We have, we'll be giving pros and cons on the ballot issues. And we have lots of other events discussing, having good discussions about current events. And now for the closing remarks. So each candidate will have two minutes and we will start. We will have the reverse order from the opening remarks. So we will begin with Barry.
Thank you, Jean. Most of us moved to Poway for the good schools, which are consistently top rated. But once, once here, we settle because of the quality of life. We don't leave. You know, people soon realize that Poway feels like a small town, not a city. And we do have a city and we do have a country in the city in the country. We are the safest city in the county, year after year. We have the best roads by far. We brag about them to other cities that are jealous of us. We have beautiful parks, Old Poway Park, Lake Poway, Blue Sky Reserve, the community park with the newly remodeled pool, which if you haven't seen, you should go see it. It's beautiful. Great trail system, 78 miles of trails. Beautiful scenery like potato chip rock. Almost half of Poway is preserved open space. We, we just added about 280 acres to that inventory over the past three years with strategic acquisitions by the city council. We've got great neighborhoods for growing families. There's something here for just about every income level. We've got affordable housing, it's top shelf. New projects for seniors in the works, set asides for veterans and the special needs community. We're going to have a facility that's second to none. We've got a strong cash position. We've got 20 million in reserves. And it's because we have a well-run city by capable leaders. We've got balanced budgets year after year. We've got a strong economic engine. The business park generates lots in, in property taxes, but our auto sales generate lots in sales taxes. And we need to help those folks out. So today, you know, Poway is the city, it's, it's the envy of the county in Southern California. And everything seems just fine. So why should I do it? Why, why should you vote for me? The reason is because we need to keep Poway headed in the right decision and not mess this up. We've got much more work to do. We need capable people to do it. We need people that understand the budget challenges, that, that these are going to require tough decisions. You can't keep everybody happy all the time, especially with COVID nowadays. But I have the right mix of experience. I've got the knowledge, I've got the time to hit the ground running and I won't mess it up. It takes experience to keep Poway on the right path. So please vote for me on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Phil?
Thank you. You know, when I came to Poway Unified back in 1976, I figured it out. When my students came through the door, they were the most important resource. I always backed my students, always backed their families, always listened to them. I always helped them solve their problems. Now, I'm 67 years old, I'm retired. And I want to do that for the city. I, I want to be able to be in your huddle. You know, when I was also coaching football, my football team's always considered I was the 12th man. Although I was on the sideline, they knew that Coach Factor was right there to help them. I want to make sure that the city of Poway knows that Phil Factor is going to listen, care about the people. I will help you solve the problems. I will also go for the resources to solve those problems. I do believe that this is the pinnacle of my life. I do believe that what I have accomplished in my, in my life as an educator and as a community volunteer, I believe that I'm ready for this job. I will preserve the desire for Poway to stay city in the country. I'll work hard to ensure the quality of life that we are used to, that it is maintained and even improved. I am honest, trustworthy, transparent and caring. And I say, I love you and I do mean it. I love Poway. I've been yelling green for the longest time. And those that know me know that I live and die Poway. And I want to tell you right now that I think that I will really listen to the people and make a difference for this city. I would like for you to take the time to look at my website, factorforpoway. Also, it's on Facebook, factorforpoway. I'd also like to tell you that I'll be at the library tomorrow between 2 o'clock and 4 o'clock. If you want campaign signs to put out, that'd be great. I'd love to hand them to you. I am available. My phone number is 858-375-3615. I'm going to repeat it. And that's because I gave it to my students anytime, all the time. Call Phil Factor. I'll listen to you.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Thank you. One of my favorite quotes is by Thomas Jefferson, who said, "The government closest to the people serves the people best." And that is what I strive to do each day as your council member, serve you in the best way possible. I work very hard to be responsive and accessible to ensure residents get the information and assistance they need. As a woman with young children, I bring a perspective that has been lacking on our council. I also work hard to be involved in the community. I'm a proud member of Ser Optimus International of Poway, a wonderful group of women helping other women in need. In addition, I'm a neighborhood coordinator with the Poway Neighborhood Emergency Corps and actively involved in the Chamber of Commerce. I often tell people that local government matters most as it has the most impact on our day-to-day life. Things like public safety, parks and roads. For many of us, that's what brought us to Poway and that's what keeps us here. We're doing great things at the city, but the work is not done yet. With the recession and staggering unemployment that this pandemic has brought, our city is not without some clouds on the horizon. But with united and experienced leadership, our city will weather this storm and come out even better than before. We enjoy a high quality of life here and I'm dedicated to continuing to make Poway a wonderful place to live. I hope you will consider me very much on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Chris?
I hope everybody had a good evening and there were a lot of great questions from the community. I'm available anytime to answer questions from anybody. You know, I'll give my information upfront. 619-396-1605 is my phone number. Oops, for Poway has my email. I mean, you can find me fairly easily on Facebook, on any social media. Call me, text me, email me, whatever you want to do. But the real part, real point that I want to make tonight is that there are clouds on the horizon. Those clouds didn't get there through fate. You know, COVID could be a good reason to say that they came, but those clouds were looming well before this. We've had the Los Peniscitos on the lagoon on the horizon for a long time. We've had many projects and many issues kicked down the road with in-lugues, affordable housing and the state mandates. So realistically, the problems have been there and they are now breaching the end of the road. We need somebody that will look at the problems with a fresh set of eyes with understanding of where our past is and where we are going and that can take that and, you know, run it through the end zone and get us to the next, you know, inning or however you want to call that. We need somebody that is going to take the experience of the council's past and bring Poway forward with everybody in mind. We don't want to just dump housing in South Poway. But at the same time, we don't want to just randomly have a free-for-all for housing everywhere and let the state have its way. So it does take a fine weaving involving to get through those issues. And I think that we need new eyes on the prize. When it comes to issues, you guys have talked about them, you guys have discussed them. We really need answers and we need solutions. And if you think that that's being done, I don't think we would have heard as many complaints or questions as we heard. I don't think that the doors I knock on would have the problems that they see with traffic and with density. So realistically, we need a change and it starts with your council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Frank?
I'll keep it short and sweet and let everyone enjoy the rest of their night. If you haven't checked out the, checked out the, the new hop shop down on Old Poway Park, go check it out. So I'll be tonight. But I just wanted to thank you again for listening in tonight. I hope that this forum provided you with the opportunity to get to know me a little better and get a sense of my ability to negotiate and resolve conflicts. As I mentioned at the start of this forum, being a good city council member involves not only genuinely caring about the community, but knowing how to work with others to get things done.